He's on now, yeah. Yeah, he's able to unmute. Hey, Justin, a sound check here. Can you hear us okay? I see you're on the.
Sure can.
Very good. We can hear you too.
Great.
This is, this is a victory. Thank you. Yeah, Justin, you can mute and unmute yourself as you wish. Yeah, okay. All right.
I can save a dozen. Let me get it.
Well, good evening. My clock says six o'clock. I think our clock there just stopped. Maybe Apple time is a little different, maybe. I don't know. There we go. Good evening. Welcome to Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Martin.
Here.
Temblin.
Yep.
Lane.
Here.
Huggins.
Metta.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Milber.
Here.
Miss Commissioner Huggins is absent.
Thank you. Item 3A, approve the Planning Commission agenda. Any changes or modifications to be made at this time? Motion. Motion to approve. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Seeing none, Jen is approved. Item 3B, approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on October 28th, 2025. Any changes, additions, or corrections to be made? Motion. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that's been approved. Item 3C, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Anything to disclose with respect to conflict of interest on matters on the agenda topic? Justin, you good?
Good.
I've had several discussions with people.
Well, don't jump again because item 3D is disclosure of outside communications.
There we go. I have had several discussions.
What else?
What's what's on, Wes? Are, where are we? 5A.
Okay.
Man, I've also had discussions on 5A and 5B.
Okay. Anyone else? We had email communications from Noel Wiltfong regarding the Cedar Creek item. And then I got a call from Steve Bowen just asking about the agritourism side. Anything else to disclose? Okay. Item 4, call to the public. Members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentations for informational purposes only, no actually be taken. There's a four-minute time limit. If you'd like to address the Planning Commission on matters not on the agenda tonight, please approach the podium and give us your name and address. Seeing no one leap up. Anything, anyone online?
No, sir.
I will close the call to the public. Brings us to item 5A, rezoning, a rezoning tract on Cedar Creek from RA to RO. Brad.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. What you have before you is a rezoning from an eight-acre tract approximately, approximately 80 acres. It's along Cedar Creek Road and at the intersection of 88th Street. Trent Teeger, GTI Group is the applicant and Todd Allen Brand Renaissance Engineering is also working on this project with us. They're both in the audience tonight. If you'd like to ask them to speak on this matter as well. I will go through the staff report. As I mentioned, it is an 80-acre tract that has been considered for rezoning. It's currently rural agriculture, which allows 10-acre lots as a minimum. The applicant is requesting a change to rural suburban, which allows for smaller lots there. At this point, some preliminary information we've got shows about 19 units on the 80 acres, so around a little over four acres per, per potential tract for this property. But the first item at hand is just the rezoning request, and then we will obviously get into the details at subsequent meetings, depending on how the rezoning is received by the Planning Commission, Austin City Council. Anyway, I will go through the staff report. As you can see, the, on page two, the tract under consideration is, you can see it's a lot of mixture of R1, RO, and rural agriculture. It's a very low-density area within the city of DeSoto. And then, of course, the next page shows the aerial photo of the location itself. As Cedar Creek meanders around this property, there is several areas of this property within the floodway and floodplain. It mostly hugs the area of Cedar Creek itself. However, I would say maybe 20% of it is within that floodway, flood, floodplain area. It's surprising. I thought there'd be more, but when you do go to Ames, it does show up as not as, as extensive as you might think. So with that, the review of the zoning compatibility factors, character of the neighborhood, surrounding land use includes agriculture west of Cedar Creek, a large lot, rural houses to the east of Cedar Creek. Believe the zoning change is appropriate to this area as there is a lot of R1 and RO residential uses surrounding this property. Also believe it's consistent with the proposed zoning and the land use plan. Has the property been restricted under its existing zoning? No, it has not. It's been farm ground for as long as we can remember. But once again, with the rural agriculture designation, we have a minimum of 10-acre lot size for tracts with that zoning designation. The extent in the, which there's a need in the community for the proposed zoning, there's no particular need for large lot residential tracts, but this part of the eastern area of DeSoto is set up and designed for that way. We have no imminent plans or near plans or even long-term plans to extend sanitary sewer utilities out to this way. And so it's probably best and most likely use is to continue with the large lot residential development on the east side. Water 1 is our utilities, as I mentioned. Ever G is serving this area with electricity. Atmos gas is also available. The water service, Water 1 is the service provider. Do have concerns about their ability to provide a water service. It's not an area we're particularly familiar with. It's not something DeSoto staff maintains, and they will, we will require a, a water serve letter when we get to the preliminary plat discussion, if we get to that point. This proposed use will require septic systems, which is consistent with what city code says is necessary or why we have this rural suburban subdivision. It is for large lot tracts that don't have the ability to attach to the city maintained septic or wastewater system. Believe there will be minor impacts to the street network. 19 houses potentially is not a great deal of traffic volume. Also Cedar Creek Road has been overlaid. It's been improved significantly just recently. The environmental impacts, don't really see any from the RA to the RO as far as environmental impacts. Once again, the stormwater is a concern has been raised to me by several residents as far as the floodplain and any kind of issues that may arise from flooding. We did have a fairly significant event last summer and actually both exit points, I mean, areas of Cedar Creek and 95th Street were inundated by water, so residents couldn't get out for a period of time. So that is, there is some concern there. But don't believe that the rezoning is necessarily an issue that will affect those types of issues. We'll, that's the next step. We always talk about site planning, preliminary plats. That's the next step in the process. We're just focusing on the rezoning itself. Economic impact, not have a significant impact, but certainly additional residences and property values will increase from just vacant farm ground. Don't see a particularly detrimental effect. And as I mentioned, the stormwater and potential flooding is something that people are concerned about nearby. It is in a low area. While I mentioned much of the property is outside the floodplain, there is some significant portions that are inside that. And so it is something that Joe and I've talked about, talked with the applicant about. So we're aware of the issues surrounding Cedar Creek. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, comprehensive plan, the land use plan, this is consistent with what DeSoto has shown for this area, and it will continue as that. We've just reviewed and updated the future land use plan and really didn't have, and really this body has not really talked about the eastern part of DeSoto being anything other than large lot residential. So a recommendation of professional staff is consistent with the future land use plan. We recommend approval of this rezoning request. And at this point, Mr. Chairman will stand for any questions, and I did mention the applicant is available tonight as well.
Thank you, Brad. For the benefit of everyone here tonight, the way this process works is the staff gives a report. They ran through the factors that are required under Golden versus Upper Park, the case that we have to analyze all zoning changes under. Those are the factors that he came from. The matter now turns to the Planning Commission to ask questions with regard to the report, and then we'll have a public hearing on this, at which point, if you want to speak on this, certainly to the extent that you can phrase your comments in the context of what we're looking at in terms of the golden criteria, which is required by law to look at, that's very helpful. So those things that Brad talked about, if your comments can dovetail with those, those are going to be most effective. One other thing to just kind of give context to this, that whatever the, the Planning Commission decides with regard to a zoning matter is, are, we're charged with doing, making a decision based on the public benefit. It's not necessarily your specific benefit or what's in your backyard. It's overall, which is why these criteria are written the way they are. So to the extent that you have comments that are broadly applicable to the community, those are most likely going to be more effective. So with that preface, I'd open it up to Brad for questions. Anything you guys want to ask?
So I'm trying to understand. So RO, I'm, I'm reading our, our code on RO right now. My question is, relates to, you said this is going to be serviced by septic.
Correct.
So that's going to require larger lots, but the, 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 I thought I heard you say that the reason why we're considering the tract is to allow for smaller lots, but isn't that kind of counterintuitive when you're, when you're requiring septic?
Well, we do have a one-acre minimum for septic systems. And so what we're trying to do, what the applicant wants to do is because of, under the RA, rural zoning, our minimum required lot size is 10 acres.
Got it. Okay.
So he wants to get more houses in there.
Okay.
I have a question about the water. I know it's water one, but we already, we had a new line put in several years ago, two-inch line. And I know if we are putting water in our pool or watering our landscaping outside, we can't run an appliance inside because the water pressure is so low. So I have some real concerns about adding more houses onto that when we can't take care of what we've got now.
Yeah, that's understood, and that's why I'd mentioned the part about the preliminary plat is those are the issues we get into at that point. We don't require will serve letters or the ability for the utility providers to give us that information until there's a preliminary plat or a site plan. This is just, as Chairman has pointed out several times, we're just talking about the land use itself.
Well, I would disagree though when it's, you've got a finding is positive because I don't think that's a lot.
Other questions for Brad?
The one I had, he asked about, or answered about the floodplains.
Yeah.
That was the main one I had.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then Brad, I'll open this up to the public for comment.
Thanks, Brad.
Any member of the public would like to address these questions, please approach the panel, give us your name and address for the record, please. Please.
All right. And I'm not going to lie. I wrote up a little thing. It may not be Doug Hill on everything exactly, but my name is Susan Lewis, and I live with my parents, John and Darlene Hackworth. I'm here to speak for them, represent them. They have lived on Cedar Creek since 1972, and their home sits directly upstream from land under consideration tonight. I grew up there, live there now, and probably will live there the rest of my life. The land was annexed about roughly 10, 20 years ago from the city, and it's remained rural agricultural. The, the proposal now to rezone it residential to suburban, appreciate the idea of the large lots. I mean, we didn't have any, we always knew that would likely be built out at some point in time, but I want to make sure, and I don't oppose the growth at all, we don't, and, but I want to make sure that it's done responsibly. The developers stated on social media that the homes have not have, be directly in the floodplain, but it's important that it's not really the whole story. Flood risk is not only about where the house sits, it is that it sits inside a mapped floodplain. The plains themselves change over time, rainfall patterns shift, upstream and downstream development alters the runoff, creeks, road, and silt. We experienced a whole heck of a lot of erosion this, this past year, and we've been flooded in our home up to nearly the first level twice back in the 90s. Before that, I think is over 100 years since that area had flooded, but it continues to be a huge risk. And sorry, a lot of ums here. You know, what was considered safe 10 or 20 years ago when that was mapped, isn't necessarily the reality today. So it's, it's about how fill roads, impervious surfaces change runoff, reduce the floodplain's storage and the potential to push water back upstream. My parents' home and others on the creek could be impacted if safeguards are not required and must be, think beyond this one project. Multiple rezonings with, without coordinated stormwater planning will risk, compound the risk across the watershed. Responsible development means that they need to require hydro, I'm going to say it wrong, hydrologic studies, retention basins sized for future storms, repairing buffers with the native grasses, and subdivision-wide stormwater controls. Larger lots are a good start, but safeguards must be built into the approval process to ensure the accountability. So to keep the creek safe, to protect the upstream and downstream properties, and to prevent this rezoning from increasing the flood risk for existing families. My parents, as I mentioned, have lived on the creek for over 50 years. They've seen the floods. I get emotional every time I have gone through this part because I've experienced the floods. They've seen the growth. They've seen what happens when the water is not respected. And tonight I ask that if this goes on and moves forward from rural agriculture to residential suburban, it does so responsibly and so that DeSoto can grow while protecting its families, its environment, and its small-town identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rose Bergweger, do you want my address too?
Please.
9160 Cedar Creek Road. And we live just south of the Hackworth, and we've been there 26 years. And fortunately, we have not had to go through flooding, but in July, we came very, very close. And, and so we saw where the waters did not follow the floodplain. They just did their own thing. And, and, and so really the entire, well, the roadways were blocked just right south of our property and then on 95th Street. And so, you know, we had the police and fire department come out there, and there is a period of time where if there was a medical emergency, I mean, there, there was not any access. So that was a big concern. Now, the area you guys are talking about is actually north of there, but it's still on Cedar Creek Road. And, and, you know, I just wanted, just to say, to really, even though on paper it might say the floodplain is only 20%, but in reality, that can change, and you can't really go by what's on paper. And so I also want to agree with her that, you know, you really, we really need to look into how to harness that, that water. I also, you know, I did the magazine, but I did an article about the floodwaters and both Kill Creek and Cedar Creek, the closer they got to Kansas River. I mean, it was like, I mean, the highest level of rapids that happened. And it was really, you know, if anybody was going to try to take a kayak in that or something, that was just dangerous. And I had never seen both of those river, creeks, rivers, well, they turned into raging rivers. And so, so the creek actually, you know, it's widened through the years, and then it also butts up to Cedar Creek. And so there's places where Cedar Creek Road, there's a drop off. And, and I love the blacktop and the lines, but then there's some places where those lines, it drops. And so, you know, it's kind of, you know, we're out in the country, which we know that. But, you know, bringing new people in the area, you know, they might not be aware of that. And so, so in addition to the flooding with Cedar Creek Road, there's an intersection from 83rd going on to Cedar Creek Road, which I know has always been a kind of hazardous area because there's a hill. And making that left turn is, is, can be dangerous. And I've, everybody who turns, you're always looking behind you because not everybody sees that there's a turn. And so I would like to suggest having some type of a blinking light, like caution that a turn is coming up because if you do add more houses, and then there's a church also on the corner that may build down the road. And, you know, right now, it's just one or two cars turning, but then in the future, if you have five or, you know, eight cars turning, that's going to back up. And, and it's just as a accident, you know, accidents waiting to happen. And so I would also say to have an extended turn lane then. And I know, you know, you guys are looking into widening that. And I do have to say that through the years, I've been there, there have been different cases where, you know, there's been dangerous areas, and the city has put in curbs and alongside, and so I've appreciated that. there's been dangerous areas and the city has put in curbs and alongside, and so I've appreciated that. But some of these areas, there isn't even any place to put those, those things in there. So, so I just, you know, wanted to, you know, really there's some things that need to be addressed with the road safety and the water safety with the flooding. Because, you know, as we were even building outside of that area, you know, all that rain, it, it just affects everything. And it's not just even our street. So it really is a much broader base, you know, just along where both Cedar Creek and Kill Creek both, you know, all of those areas in the community. And so, so yeah, so that is my comments and thank you.
Thank you. You're up.
Good evening. My name is Dave Dunford. I live at 8895 Cedar Creek Road. And did a drop in visit with Mr. Weisenberger last week or two weeks ago. And he was very helpful about the information associated with this project. I had several questions. One of them is how does it affect me? One of them is how's it going to affect the growth of the city? And towards that end, had some questions for the engineers if they're here. I assume they've, who's engineer? Have you done any soils work out there? Check soils? Well, not if I don't have to.
So this, this, this actually is for public comment.
Yes.
If you have some specific questions, we could try to get those addressed, but.
Had some questions about the makeup of the soil, specifically its ability to handle sewage for a septic system. Well, were you able to tell or have you analyzed it to an extent to where you can?
Yeah, so I appreciate the question. We'll give them an opportunity to give you a response. If you just give us your, your comments now.
We'll come up later.
We'll give that.
Oh, that's great. Very good. Thank you. A concern I have, of course, is will the lot size that has been offered or discussed really continue through? And the concern, of course, is that it does, but we don't, we have no, no qualification, no requirement that it is. Is there any way that that can be bound to the processes in process tonight or in progress tonight? I don't know that.
So your question is are they required to build like four acre lots?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
And the nature of the construction, don't know what that's going to be like, if that's going to be multi-family, single family. Can you tell me from the code?
The code would not permit multifamily.
Okay, correct. Very good. Access to this 80 acre area, is it just off the one street?
We have not seen a site plan on that. That will be something that's going to come out when they actually put.
Gotcha. That could be a big consideration.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, that could be a big consideration to this group. Will there be a public hearing or public input about that?
Absolutely.
As it unfolds, very good. And I also was concerned about the water. Looked on the county maps and they assigned this all as an AE designation, which is 0.0 feet. I have no idea what that means. I'm formerly the emergency management director for the city of Lenexa many years ago. So I was just curious about that. There is FEMA panel reference. And my question is, how accurate would it be to, are we working with the real current document on the FEMA description of the watershed?
So part of any site plan that goes through the city has a requirement that they do stormwater retention, stormwater analysis. Part of that. And that's not necessarily relevant to the zoning question we have before.
Understand. That doesn't affect me because I'm upstream, so to speak, up on the hill. So I was just curious.
Yeah.
The city must satisfy itself that that's going to be well-built. And I think that's all.
Thank you very much.
That was my question. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hannah Wiltfong. I live on the white box straight across the street from the plot that we're discussing. I'm new to this kind of meeting and I will try to follow the guidelines. I emailed you today. Thank you for the email back. I was nervous to come here, but brought my family for backup. Anywho, I am a third generation Wiltfong living on a 10 acre spot. It is three plots of land, one of which is zoned RO, which is being used as a comparison for the purpose of this exercise. For the public record, my comments would be that I will watch this construction. I will live in this construction. I have a small new family and I took on more land than I know how to handle, just so that we could keep it in our family. I'm not opposed to growth, but I really want to echo the thoughts that were shared with us this evening from the Hackworth slash Lewis family. If, if development is to occur, it has to be done so responsibly because the charm of DeSoto is really, really reflected on Cedar Creek Road. So we have to take good care of whatever occurs there. I also want to make the comment that I recently had the privilege of replacing a septic out there and it sucks bad. So I, I also have the privilege of having a partner who works from home full-time and wifi sucks bad. High winds, no buried lines. These are things that will not be appealing to those families who could afford nice, nice homes on four acre lots. I look forward to the beauty of adding property value, but I am very concerned about the changing sunset view that I have on my porch. I love an engineer, welcome, but I'm nervous about this and I will be following this closely. Again, for the record, my name is Hannah Wiltfong. I can be reached right there at that house. Drive up the driveway, knock on the door. Thank you.
Thank you.
I came all the way up here from Georgia, so I have to say something. And we live down on the bottom of the white spot.
Get your name for the record?
Oh, my name, Bill Hackworth, John's son.
Thank you.
And I used to live here for 20 years and I made loops and ate at the ice cream place here if anybody remembers. But anyway, so just, just to recall, some of my ancient history is when the plaza flooded, we got flooded. That was supposedly 500 year floodplain and that was eight foot in the basement. And my dad's house, I helped build it, is on a railroad bed. I don't know if you know the Santa Fe Trail goes through there, but there was a railroad bed there and we were up in the air. And I've seen a lot of that underwater, including that big land that used to have corn and soybean and they used to put waste out there to feed it. So I don't know where it all went. But anyway, I haven't really lived here for 20 years. But I can tell you, it's flooded last year. My sister's scared to death it's coming up again. So to codify it, my dad's septic lateral field was underwater. It gets underwater way too often. Luckily I put big six foot ones and 200 feet long, really deep, because we did a percolation test. And I'm a licensed plumber, believe it or not, as well as a retired engineer. So stop digging. Anyway, so water, obviously big concern. And even though it's downstream from that guy, you keep putting traffic in downstream and moves up. And there we go. It would be in his backyard. You know, if it's just uncontrolled, and that's what's happened, they've developed irresponsibly upstream and the, all that runoff water, you know, because off the roofs, off their cement, off their parking lots, goes into the creek. And it comes up here because it's got no place to go. So water is like the hugest concern, but the other is, you know, I just experienced it again. Cedar Creek Hill, I don't know how many people lived here in the winter time, Cedar Creek Hill is hell. Anyway, and that, that damn, the road there, I pulled plenty of people out of that hole that went off the cliff. I pulled a guy's bumper off once. He wasn't mad at me, he was glad to get his car out of the hole. But anyway, something would have to be done with that intersection if you got, God knows how many more people, but we're really glad it wasn't a multifamily thing here to it. Anyway, so the scenery, the septic tank underwater, you know, at least we put our tank up on the railroad bed with the house, but the lateral fields are underwater. So, you know, those aren't clean, you ever flushed them out. So that goes into the water and whoever's drinking that, I don't, I don't know if we go get it out of the car. Anyway, so more codified stuff. And I'm sure the county, do they govern the septic percolator test, these guys, what they're going to do? Okay. And how often your lateral field can, can it even be underwater, but I mean, you know? And I really don't trust the floodplain maps. Twice, two, in my 20 years, twice 500 year flood. So, you know, can you trust that crap? It needs rethought. Anything else? Well, someone wanted a blinking light, I'd say a traffic light and level it out, do a bunch of construction on that intersection where you got to pop out on the middle of the hill where people are sliding down and sliding up and sliding in. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Give us the slip. If there's someone on behalf of the applicant who would like to address some of the things they heard, feel free to approach, approach the podium.
Todd Allen Brand, 102 Abbey Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. That's Renaissance Infrastructures address. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners for having us, letting the case come forward. And I appreciate the comments from the gallery. It's really helpful. But, I mean, there's a couple of things to address. One thing I think everybody, the big theme is the floodplain area. Oh, and I'm here with another gentleman from our office, Andy Gabbert, and the developers, Brad, Trent and Brad Teager. Is the floodplain, so we have to meet city code. And not only do we have to meet city code, but we have to meet federal code when we do this stuff. So when we design these items in the streets and the potential house sites, we'll make sure, you know, based on good engineering practices that we meet those requirements and, and that staff approves them, they'll review them. That's probably the biggest issue. And, you know, the, probably the other issue is talk, people talking about areas where floodplains. I don't know where all these people live, you know, I don't know if these houses that they live in are actually in the floodplain potentially, you know, I'm not sure. Or adjacent to it, and I don't know their elevation, so it's hard to speak on that. But, you know, we really think this is going to be a good designed development for the city and for the community. You know, where our lots averaging are probably, probably average about four acres. You know, there'll be nothing under three and some over, closer to five in some places. I think the other issue that came up was utilities. We've had some conversation with Water One and we haven't got into like the meat of the design, but we will most likely have to extend a 12 inch line down Cedar Creek Road and bring service in to the development. So we've had those conversations and they're comfortable with thinking they can, you know, meet the demand for the houses and stuff. So I don't know if there's any other questions that need to be addressed. I know the gentleman talked about the soils report, Brad and Trent, we laid out some points for them and they did their own soil testing. So I'm not 100% sure what they came up with their soil, soil testing. And if you are interested to know, I mean, they can probably pop up, one of them can jump up and address the comment if it's that important. Really, a lot of these comments seem like those would come later on addressing specifically. So it's kind of hard to get into addressing them without you guys seeing a plan in front of you. So I understand your position.
Right.
Where you're at on that.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's anything else or if anything comes up, okay.
If they drop, bring that line down, will they put in a fire hydrant too? Because there's no fire hydrants.
Well, we have to, we have to meet fire code, so we have to have fire hydrants in the subdivision that meet the current fire code. So most likely, I mean, I don't know, Water One designs that and we don't design the water lines for it, but I would assume they'll bring the 12 inch down and where they turn to come into development, they'll most likely drop a fire hydrant at that, that T, that T or 90 degree bend, whatever they do. So, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the planning commission on this issue? Well, seeing no further comment, I'll close the public hearing, the matters before the planning commission. Questions, comments?
The only thing I had to deal with the floodplain, which they've kind of addressed that, the, the narrow road. I don't know what can be done about that. I know they just repaved it.
It's up to the top of the hill where the most of the talking turning off, 83rd Street, that drop down crossing the smoke shop.
Yeah.
That's precarious.
Yeah.
But it sounds like we've got things to talk about and we talk about a site plan. Right. You're going to have to have a traffic study, you're going to have to do your water retention, just like we do it for any other subdivision in, in the city. All of those are very good points as far as whether they can actually perk the soil. That's going to be subject to the building permit and whether the city's going to permit that. So if, for what the questions before us really aren't those.
Yep.
Right. Obviously the flooding in the areas of interest, it's important. And whatever happens here, the, the point should be that we're going to take whatever steps we can to mitigate that this is going to make things worse, but that didn't fix the problem. Sounds like you got a problem. That's a different issue. And so we probably do need to address that as a city. And it sounds like Brad mentioned at least that there's some talk about trying to address some of that. As far as the, the criteria of the report, obviously Linda, you identified one that you disagreed with Brad's finding. Is there any other comments about the findings that you, you take issue with? Justin, you've been too quiet tonight. What do you got?
Well, yeah, I just kind of want to echo some of your comments, Commissioner Timlin. A lot of the concerns that the citizens do have.
Uh oh.
Oh, why would he freeze now?
Storm drainage and floodplain and traffic.
Justin, you kind of froze. You kind of froze on us. Maybe you give us another shot of what you're saying.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're in and out.
Yes.
Justin, you're in and out a little bit on us.
Try to turn in your video. Pull some bandwidth back.
Uh oh.
Oh.
Oh, I hope I didn't. Justin, can you still hear us?
There, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I, we can hear you now. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I just want to say I can't. Chairman, comments, a lot of the things about, that stuff will be addressed. Submit the preliminary plat. I, I, I have professional opinion on this. I think this is the right spot for the flood subdivision. It follows a comprehensive plan and follows a future land use. So I would be in support of this request for rezoning.
Thank you, Justin. So the question I suppose is, you know, obviously it's agricultural use right now. Other appropriate uses for this property, what's they've been asked for is this large lot residential rural subdivision. I'm guessing none of us think this is right for a Buc-Ee's.
Nope.
Or it's probably not right for an apartment complex.
Nope. Nope.
It's probably not right for single family subdivisions of a quarter acre because we don't have sewer.
Right.
Right. So the question is, is this appropriate use for this particular tract? Not that they can build it, but still got to go through the process and, you know, make sure that it doesn't cause any other problems. But as a land use, is this appropriate?
I don't have a problem with it.
Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 5A as written. Rezoning the tract from RA to RO for today's, in today's agenda.
Motion made? Seconded. Any further discussion?
If we get that 12 inch line put in, it would help.
That's going to be a topic for another day.
I know, but it's hard for me to vote in favor of something if I disagree with something on here.
Okay, well, you have the right to vote no.
I realize.
A roll call, please.
Milburn?
Yes.
Medoc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Templin?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. This was the end of it. You'll hear more about this conversation. This conversation is going to continue.
The site plan is the really important piece, so when that comes up, I'm sure you'll just pay attention to when it comes through and we'll, we'll, we'll definitely keep our eyes on it.
Thank you. Moving to item 5B, a public hearing to the, to discuss the occupation, home occupation is limited retail residential zoning district.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to say that we do also for the residents here, we do have a requirement for preliminary plats that the nearby homeowners are notified as well. It's not a public hearing, but they are notified and allowed an opportunity to attend the meeting.
Thank you.
So, with that, we are now hopefully on the home stretch for our potential home occupation retail uses. We've had two meetings on this item and we've gone through several iterations of discussions on sizes of lot, site planning, ADA requirements, off-street parking requirements, a lot of things. And Patrick and I and Mike and Joe have worked on trying to thread the needle with this and also with presenting and getting input from the planning commission and the potential affected property owner. And I do believe we've gotten to that point. I don't know that there is much for, to rehash at this point in time, but you do have a proposed retail conditions that Patrick's worked on pretty hard recently as far as trying to get the exact language and in place that allows this types of use with fairly significant restrictions and a process of a special use permit that require the planning commission to look at all these items and then also to have the statement in there that the planning commission may require some additional measures to help with a potential accessory building use on site. So, with that, I will open this up for any questions or comments you may have, but I do think we've really studied this one pretty well and came up with a solution that will work for city staff's opinion and also from input from the planning commission. And also, Mr. Chairman, this is something the city council brought to us, so they will be have a keen interest on, on the recommendation as well.
Thank you, Brad. I, I have a quick question before you too far into this. So, the email you sent is for a new sub-paragraph five under Article 10, Section 4. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
So, page four of the report has items 1, 2, 3, and 4, and 5 would be the one that's added to that on the time limit.
Yes. Patrick, where is, well?
Sorry, the timeline is already addressed in all right. Right underneath this section.
Okay, so 5 is actually its own section underneath.
Okay, I got, all right, I follow.
Okay, sure. Okay, I didn't know where that went. So, is that clear to the rest of the commission? So, did you get the email?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the email has a modification to the section immediately following Section 4 that we're looking at. This, this email, Roger? Yeah, I think so. Okay. I'm following now. Did you get it? Okay. So, the, the text amendment that's in front of us is as per the report modified by the emails.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, any questions for Brad before we start, or we, this is a matter for a public hearing? We good? Okay, thank you, Brad. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing on item 5B. The text amendment to permit home occupation is limited retail use in residential zoning districts. Any member of the public who'd like to address this issue, please approach the podium, give us your name and address. I assume there's nobody online other than Justin?
Let me just check. Nope, that's correct.
Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. The matter is now before the plant. Questions, comments, concerns?
I think we've got it patched down pretty well.
Yep, been through it a few times now.
I don't, I don't want to overcomplicate anything, but I, I do have one question. Is there any sort of consideration we should take with the fire department in terms of fire suppression if it's going to be a commercial facility with public in it?
I guess I, my thinking is that would be part of our, our site plan review and we get into all those issues. It'll also be something that our building official will look at if a hydrant is needed, but we have limited the size to 300 square feet, so it's really, the accessory building is probably never going to be as important as the house that's nearby and we do have adequate water lines mains in these areas that serve at least the DeSoto side. I can't speak for, we do have Water One and also Water Seven that serves portions of DeSoto, but, but I feel very confident in our ability to serve.
To me, this is a special use permit, right? So, if there's someone who's going to come with a particular use, so they're going to stuff it full of cotton bales that they're retailing out of there that we're working on spark. We probably ought to be concerned about it.
Well, I'm, I'm putting my work hat on and when I go for a C of O, I got to meet egress, lighting, fire suppression, so on and so forth in order to do that. So, I didn't know if we needed to put anything in there from a language perspective, at which I'm fine if we leave it out because it is a special use permit. I just thought I would ask.
It's, it's, it's going to be a daunting proposition to the extent that we have preparation of five-acre lots who want
Right.
start opening retail businesses.
Right.
We're going to rue the day we did this.
Yep.
But I'm guessing there's not a huge demand for that, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
You're right, you're right to ask the question, though. It's actually, absolutely right.
Yeah. I don't want to overcomplicate it. I'm just trying to make sure that we do our due diligence.
It, it is the right question because you are talking about it compared to we certainly required AD requirements, you know, with city building codes.
Right.
Those are kind of the references we have to that, so.
I would just feel comfortable that we put some verbiage in there that says we will address things, things in the site plan or something. I don't know if that's appropriate, but at least it's a reminder to ourselves in the future.
So, under 2A, it's got included indication of compliance with ADA and
Okay.
Do we need it more than that? I mean, we can, we can always suggest adding more to it.
Well, with city building codes, address that though.
Should. Should. Yeah.
So, I think we're covered there.
Just on a personal note, with the years that I spent on the fire department going through things similar to this, I've been in the building and I don't see anything that would be any kind of conflict in there.
Okay. Well, none, right? Can Justin still hear us? Are you there?
I'm clear. First off, I want to thank staff for all their hard work on this. They've done a lot of research on it, the whole team, so I, I do want to say thank you for that. Also, just for being open to listen to the citizens and have an open mind to even bring this forward. So, I do want to thank staff for that. However, I, I still, this is the third meeting. We've talked about this. I still can't come around on this request. I, I, I just don't think having this type of retail sales in residential areas is appropriate. I've, I've looked through the comprehensive plan. There's no mention of any type of retail sales, you know, within the comprehensive plan, so unfortunately, I, I can't report this text amendment as presented.
Thanks, Justin. Any other comments for the discussion? Motion?
When we say city building codes, just making sure I'm clear on this, that we're talking about a non-residential building code.
I think it's pretty vague, so I'm not quite sure what city building codes mean. I think it's a good question.
Well, when we go through all these site plans, there isn't going to be an occupancy permit issued. I mean, that's a separate process that our building official staff goes through and looks at all these types of things and, and knowing our group the way I do, they, they do flag things and, and they're not bashful about telling someone this, this isn't going to work.
So, in order to have a business license, you would have to have a C of O.
Yeah, well, we don't have business license in DeSoto, but you would have to have a occupancy permit before they can move in.
Okay. The occupancy permit is going to be issued for the residents. This is an answer. It's a good question of what standards are they going to be held to when we talk about city building codes?
My understanding is it'd be, right now, it's 2018 Building Code. That's what would be applied to these structures, as they are any accessory building.
For residential.
For residential use. Now, this one's got a higher and greater use than just, you know, putting your classic cars in, but certainly with the occupancy of.
Can we specify the building code then perhaps?
This is Brad's problem in my book.
Well, if you want, we can add that language. If you want to just make a motion that allow staff to reference building code and cite the specific codes that would come into play, we can certainly do that.
You might want to because you get another application, you're not going to, you know, I, I hate to have you just twist it because we left it vague. So, if you need some more support, put it in here now. I think Charlie's got a good point.
I will, however, echo what Justin said. I thank you for spending so much time on this, but I, I do want to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, well, we're we are in the get it right business. We, we do our best. I know that. We've talked about some interesting issues from time to time.
Patrick?
I just wanted to clarify. I don't. I mean, this is considered a home occupation, so I don't think we would be applying commercial building codes.
I don't think you would either. That's what begged the question.
It would still be residential building.
Although there may be.
You guys could put any requirements on it, but.
Well, that's why I would ask Brad to think about if you get an application like this, what are you going to want to apply? And if there are certain elements of the commercial code you want to apply to this or you probably ought to make them applicable. I don't know how that works.
I just get worried about emergency egress paths and exit lighting and all the things that you're required to meet it to get a C of O in a business. We don't address any of that in here, and I think we leave ourselves a little bit in a gray area that I'd like to not be so gray with, especially with safety.
Well, I guess I could certainly say I could get with Cameron and we could come up with some specifics.
Even if it's basic language, I think it would be fine.
I think you'd have something to hang your hat on, Brad. I mean, you know, you gotta have something to say it's got to be more than just the residential code because you're bringing people in.
I'll talk to Cameron. We could complete the public hearing and then we could have a final.
Yeah, I mean.
Our December meeting's only three weeks away, so.
So, I guess theoretically, what we're talking about is table and bring it back here. We've had the public hearing. Yeah. One more time for approval in December to make sure that you've got.
Public hearing is tonight. I mean, it won't extend to public hearing. We can do that.
Well, I've already closed the public hearing, so.
Or maybe you could make a motion sufficient detail to allow staff to make a minor adjustment before it goes to the council.
I can do that.
To extend the
I mean.
issue for anyone who might be wanting to operate such a.
You guys tell me, but the motion that I would make that, that staff would add verbiage in that would address emergency exit lighting, emergency exit, exit signage. And some verbiage related to fire suppression. And I think that would at least address basic life safety requirements for a business, I think.
That's so small. I don't, I'm not worried about the lighting so much. I just want to egress and that door's locked. Some other way to get out of that building.
Yeah. And again, I'm just going by what I checklist that I've gone through a dozen times. Yeah, so if we have something to address exit in the event of a power loss, that would be great. And then if we have something to address a fire in the event of a fire, I think that would probably cover our bases.
Okay, certainly, we can add that type of language.
Okay.
So, just so I'm clear, I didn't, I'm not hearing everything, but is this motion to move it to city council or just to update it and we vote on it in December?
My preference would be to table it and bring it back in December to have a good look at whatever it is you come up with. I just think we ought to. It's an issue I think you ought to deal with. But that's me. The idea, though, I think, Justin, was can we just give enough specific direction to let them take it on to council? And that was, I think, what Charlie was trying to do.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can try, but I, I would feel more comfortable with your suggestion as well.
Make.
I can go either way.
I think we're almost beating a dead horse.
Before the planning commission, I vote.
I would just as soon vote and get it done, let the staff work out the minute details.
They're still operational, though. It's not
Yeah. Yeah.
And this is setting the standard for not just this particular project.
Yeah, that's why it has to do with a particular use within the city. It is going to be on our books and somebody else is going to be able to use this, so we do kind of do it right if we can.
I understand what you're saying. It's been dragging on and we appreciate you guys coming and, but.
I do have a question if you don't mind. We are, we are operating, yes, but I am very much limiting, you know, any advertisement that we're doing out of respect for everybody here. I absolutely do not want to step on any toes. I'm to the point now, we're right around Christmas. I mean, I need to start advertising and I respect everything you're doing. I, I absolutely respect the staff who has done everything they can to, to get this pushed through, but I mean, am, am I free to go ahead and advertise like I should be advertising? Because it's, it's really kind of
I don't know that
we're six months in.
This commission has never given you any direction as to what you can or cannot do. So, I don't think we can give you any opinion on that either.
Okay, I just don't want to disrespect anybody by
I understand. Yeah, in a minute.
We are really close to Christmas.
I'll echo what Roger's saying and to, to the point of what we're discussing here, it's not so much that you are in violation or not in violation of anything. What we're trying to make sure is that we get it right for the future because in five years, somebody's going to come up and apply for this and we're going to forget why it's on the books.
So, so appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
Okay. What's your pleasure? One of two ways. You can move to table, you can move to approve with specific instructions. What do you want to do? Or you can move to deny, which Justin maybe ever wanted.
I got one question before we make a motion. Would, Patrick, would you, I mean, are you comfortable making some, like helping me draft a motion to put this together real quick and to where it would be sticky enough or we'd feel comfortable with it, or should we table it?
I mean, my, I think my preference would be to do your motion, but just say life safety issue. We'll keep it a little bit vague so that I just think depending on the application we get.
The rest of it would be basically under special use permit conditions.
Right. And I just worry if, for example, lighting or just some of the things you mentioned, if they're clearly not needed or applicable. Is this language going to require that when everybody agrees it's not really important?
Can we say fire safety, Patrick?
Yeah, that's what I'm just leave it a little bit vague that way, so.
Let me suggest.
Okay, what do you got?
We modify Section 2A after city building codes. Add and to address life safety issues in the discretion of city staff. Period, and then start the next sentence with 300 square feet maximum structure size shall be permitted.
As long as, do we all agree that life safety is inclusive of egress? As long as we're all in agreement that that.
Can't think of anything more important than life safety than egress.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm good with what you wrote. Okay. I didn't write exactly what you wrote, so do you?
I agree. You need me to do it again? Edgar, you need me to do it again?
So it would be two A at the end of, after city building codes, it would be and to address life safety issues. In the discretion of city staff, period. Then the next sentence would be 300 square foot maximum structure size shall be permitted. Kind of do two different ideas.
So I'm going to ask a question here. If. City staff determines that an egress, an additional egress is not needed. Is that going to override code?
No, the code that's going to be applied is the residential code. So the question is because you're using a retail use, are there additional things that need to be done?
Right.
And we're basically giving instruction to staff to come up with. If there's something else you believe is appropriate for life safety issues, then put it on there.
Right.
And then it's going to come before us, and if we've got complaints about it, we're going to do the special use permit.
Right.
Dog and pony show and we'll be able to see that, but at least here we're giving some specific direction that. In addition to just city building codes for residential, you need to consider life safety issues.
Right, yeah, because you're going to have public in your, in the space. So, yeah, yeah.
Okay, does that address?
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve item five B with the. Specified conditions as Roger stated, and I won't be able to repeat as eloquently after item two A. As Edgar recorded.
And with the modification of Patrick's email.
And with the modifications of Patrick's email.
Second still stands. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Templin?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Maddock?
Yes.
Milburn?
What did you say?
No.
Oh, she carries.
We needed to have that on the record though. Thank you, sir.
Needed to be on with it. Thank you.
Yep, I'm with you. Okay. Item five C, and I think we ought to just get Larry to come up here and sit right next to me because she's been here.
All right, Chairman, these are, as like the previous two items are something we've talked about quite a bit recently. And once again, we've used our city attorney quite well on this. He's earned his keep on going through and then coming up with. Language that once again is one of these situations where they're kind of one offs. We want to. Allow Kevin and Steve to stay, but also we have a desire to enforce our livestock regulations. Keep those. Animals on the larger tracks within DeSoto, which is what the intent of our ordinance is. Of course, this is a situation that, you know, the goats were fine. Nobody had a problem with them and we didn't get a complaint. So our codes department has to act on it and. Trying to find once again how to thread the needle and. Allow this situation to, with some parameters to continue. But what we came up with is in your staff report, the one thing that did change is now the application deadline will be December 30th. So keep bumping that back as we keep continuing meetings along these lines. But I don't know if there's a whole lot more of that we can add at this point. But I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Questions for Brad?
I thought we said we were not going to make them dehorn. All goats must be dehorned. I thought we said we.
Yeah, we're removing that and that's, yeah, it's going to be eliminated.
So the text.
Nails have to be neutered. But they don't have to be.
Correct.
Want to make sure that was clarified. Am I not reading that correctly?
Yeah, I may have not highlighted that section, but pretty clear in my mind that says staff agrees that this section should be. Eliminated regardless of what planning commission's ultimate recommendation is.
Report says that the dehorning and neutering.
Yeah, I guess we need to talk about removing the neutering, so.
So the morning is the one you're recommending.
Yes.
So with that modification, your proposal then stands as written. Questions about that? All right, this is a public hearing. I'll now open this to members of the public. Anyone would like to address the planning commission regarding this item? Please feel free to approach the podium and give us your name and address. Just note for the record that Larry is here, so we got that. Nobody online?
Nobody online.
I will now close the public hearing, the matters before the planning commission. Any further comments, suggestions, criticisms? Accolades? Motion.
I think it's okay.
Make a motion to accept five C. With modification.
Remove, yeah, the neutering is still going to remain.
Yes.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded for the discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Maddock?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Templin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Item five D billboard for ag tourism along K-10 highway.
All right, thank you, Chairman. This is also a council request that we look at the. Agritourism use and the billboard for the winery. Again, our city code does not allow for billboards. However, in this instance, we have a fledgling business that's just moved to DeSoto. They felt like. You know, that they needed some sort of additional representation to help people get to their, their spot. They are in a fairly obscure area. Along 95th Street. And I don't believe there in the area that was flooding or blocked off from the flood. Maybe they were, but once again, it's a very windy. Narrow road, and if you're not familiar with this, so you probably wouldn't think there would be a winery down that, down that way. So Mr. Hoff put up a billboard which our code staff immediately flagged as whoops, can't do that. And then, of course, talking with council mayor, they asked the planning commission, look at a way to. Once again, the needle and come up with a way that this can be a, something that we can feel comfortable allowing. But not something that we feel like is going to proliferate up and down K-10 highway. So we came up with some considerations as far as must be an agritourism business, must be on land that joins K-10. Did have some height restrictions. Now, these are, I did get better information from, from George Hoff on the size of his sign. It was a little bit bigger than he initially told me. I actually had him go out and measure and give me those dimensions. So it's 10 feet above ground. It's 12 feet wide. Eight feet for the actual height of the sign itself, so a coverage area of 96 square feet. Once again, staff's opinion is I don't think there are many situations within DeSoto that this would be applicable. As far as an agritourism business, so they do have to have that certificate in hand before the sign would be allowed. Or and in this case, he's had that agritourism certificate for, before he came to DeSoto. So we do believe that, I guess in support of a new business in town and something that's helping. The brewery downtown. Offer more ser, or goods and services that this would be a benefit to DeSoto. We are trying to diversify our base. Diversify things that residents would find interesting in DeSoto and, and help people stay and feel like it's a wholesome community. That has different outlets for activities, and that's kind of the direction that the council has given myself and Mike. To look at these items and Patrick's came up with some suggested language. It helps fit within the city code a little bit better, more clarity. And so with that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Brad? Like to open this up for the public hearing. Thank you, Brad. Anyone would like to address the planning commission regarding this item five D? Please approach the podium. Give us your name and address. Anyone online, Mike?
No, sir.
With that, I'll close the public hearing, the matters before the planning commission.
Another question I have is we did bring up lighting at one time, and I don't see that addressed on here. Brought that up last time. Do you have anything else on that, Brad?
Yeah, the only thing about the lighting, at least with what Mr. Hoff was concerned, is he doesn't have any electricity over there. He didn't feel like it was necessary, so we just kind of said, we don't, we're good. And he was happy with just being able to keep his sign, so.
Your thought is if it's not in here, they won't be able to light.
Correct, yes.
Sorry. I thought the consensus of last meeting was we didn't want to allow illuminated, meaning like flashing sign, but. I thought the thought was a single light to light it up.
That was.
But it's not addressed in here at all, so that's why I was wondering.
Well, I think they, I don't know that a code has anything prohibited.
So the section that we're adding here, the subsection F. Is under the agricultural exceptions, exemptions.
Basically saying you're getting one freebie on the sign and these are the only. Requirements, so you can kind of do anything else you want.
There again, we're opening it up for somebody else to come up with a sign to. To address this now or address it later when somebody.
Patrick, you're saying that non-electric essentially means that it's not self-illuminated and so. If, if a person wanted to shine a spotlight on it, that would be acceptable? Okay.
I know it's non-electronic message sign, so meaning your message can't be electronic.
Right.
But yeah, I, I assume that if someone wanted to light up the sign, they could.
Is it your belief that they would be subject to the sign ordinance generally even with this? So this would exclude the, any compliance with any other sign ordinance?
This is a freebie. You have one sign. Cause even George, he called and said, well, I kind of need. Another one near my entrance, so I told him, well, I think that's too much, right?
Shoot.
Well, you get this one sign. Everything else you got to comply with the sign regulations, but you get this kind of freebie.
Okay, so this is the one freebie. If he wants to do anything else, he's got to go through the sign order. Have to address the issue? It's your call.
Well, I, I just want to see if he comes up and pops a light up there, whether he puts some final, some little solar doodah to hang up there. To light it. Nobody's going to complain about it and we're not going to get caught in the middle of something, so.
Good point. I don't think there's anything we're going to be able to do to prevent that. As long as it's a non-electronic message sign.
Okay, I'm good then.
Other comments, questions, motions?
Make a motion to approve item five D as written with the. Section five exemptions, starting with the letter F. For the email, I believe. Is that correct?
So I think this is from the, for the staff report. I don't think the email has to do with this.
It's just the red ladder diodes.
Okay.
Well, I had tweeted and what you see here on the screen, this is what we're asking to be.
Oh, yeah, okay. It's consistent with email, consistent with the email, yeah. Thanks. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Templin? Martin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Maddock?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yeah.
Well, who cares?
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing. Anybody need a environment break? You good? Okay, moving into item seven B, consider a site plan for the Merck campus.
At seven A?
Seven A.
Seven A.
That's a move.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing that. Seven A.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's. And we cover a lot of range of stuff here, planning commission. Talking about a multi-billion dollar expansion in Merk, so on the same agenda. Anyway, what you have before you is Merk is planning to construct three additional buildings at their location on 91st Street. Material management building, drug production and utility building. They do have a couple smaller. Health buildings, a guardhouse and a security building. So with that process, we have to go through a site evaluation as far as how it fits within our, our building code. And we'll point out that Merk has met with us on several occasions as far as this information and want to make sure that they. Get it right and have smooth sailing through the planning commission. They've been good corporate citizens and have really gone out of their way in many. In many instances as far as helping this, get the information to us in a timely manner. If you look at the overall site plan itself, I mean, it's a large campus, so it does look fairly complicated in this situation. The, the area that's going to be expanded is to the west at the, I guess, the southeast corner of. Eighty, pardon me, Sunflower Road and 91st Street. And they're going to have a building up front and then parking in between. And then the other buildings towards the rear. One of the big concerns that we had, staff had, was the fire access to these locations. It's. You know, there's a lot of moving parts in these buildings themselves and making sure that fire trucks and apparatus can get close enough to the building. To have any kind of ability to fight fires was really important, so we did have them add several access roads. Additional hydrants around the building. So you can tell that there's ultimately about 171,000 additional square feet of. Building space and like I said, as you know, work does a lot of high, high production, high secretive. Very difficult kind of. Testing on their facility, which will make sure that if something does happen, that yeah, the access to the locations to help people and also. Put out any kind of event that may happen. One thing also that as far as moving on more of the technical things of the, what we look at just for the site plan is. Sidewalks, landscaping, traffic access, all those things. Remember, city actually extended 91st Street. Five or six years ago, so that went through Sunflower, Sunflower Road is improved, still chipped teal south of. 91st Street, but once again, it is a hard surface. And then, of course, that 87th Street was also approved and overlayed. Now was actually a project that the city coordinated with Merk. As far as a special benefit district to get that improvement done. And also there's a trail along 87th Street as well. So there's a sidewalk on 91st, there's a sidewalk on 87th. We also have plans for the park board to continue. The Sunflower Trail farther south to 87th, so we're going to ultimately connect all these areas. Through this potential development. So we did have, one thing I also wanted to point out to you is the contractor trailers. That was another sort of issue that. That staff talked about. And it really kind of came up is because Panasonic is under construction and there's just, there's a trailer city out there right on the corner of Astra. And now it, Energy Way and felt like kind of, and maybe even if we talked about it early on. We probably still would, might have ended up having trailers to be there, but because it's taken years and years and it's just not something we really. Want to have desirable, looked at as far as if something prominent up front. And then we're talking with Merk, they're very cooperative. They put that, their trailer area behind the main buildings and also it's about 1,000 feet each direction. So there's, it's really not going to be as protected. it's really not going to be as particularly visible, yeah, you'll see it, but they also have, on their own accord, lined their whole campus with trees that were something that was not requested or required by the city. In addition to that, they do have their landscaping plan that's in the staff report as well, which, which meets our requirements, they've, once again, they're a good corporate citizen, they've gone above and beyond in many ways what we'd expect a development to do. As far as the utilities, City of DeSoto is providing water, sewer, Evergy is doing the electric, Atmos Gas is out there, they've included a stormwater detention, there's a stormwater letter in your packet, photometric plan is in the staff report, so we've got everything that we feel like, they just met it in some ways, it makes it easier for us and staff where we're not having a nitpick, or we feel like something's being hidden, or something isn't quite right, you know, check the code for the parking, they've exceeded that amount as far as what we would require for the manufacturing and production facilities, so there's ample parking, they've also had EV spots, plenty of ADA accessibility, ADA stalls, and then also visitor parking, so they have exceeded our code requirement for auto parking. As far as I mentioned, the landscaping, they do have interior landscaping in addition to the street trees that go around the site, and also I would just say that they've, you know, they've, I've seen them out watering many times, so they didn't just plant them, and, you know, good luck, they've, they've maintained them well, the ones that have not survived, they've been replaced, and not because of a code letter, but just because it's important to them that the trees are in there, are growing and alive as far as, as well as they're supposed to be. Also wanted to mention that the parking islands and entrances have also been properly landscaped. There's only going to be one sign that's been proposed, you can kind of see it off on the main entrance, it's just a Merck Animals Health typical sign that you see on their, their building now, so there is no additional sign require, requests with this site plan. And you can see also, the applicant has read our code and looked at, you know, beefed up the main entrances, the corners, as far as the visible areas, and I think they've done a good job as far as the architectural features for this building, and trying to maintain a campus kind of look with, with a fairly high-end scientific, technical type facility. So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Everybody's chomping at the bit. So this is the first time I've seen this one, so I'm trying to get my head around exactly how this works operationally. The two entrances on the 91st Street are both new curb cuts, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so there's fencing, I see that has a gate over on the far west side, on the east side, okay, there's a proposed double gate over there, so everybody's got to park out here outside the gates towards the street. Correct? I'm just kind of curious, I normally don't see these site plans where you have parking so far away from the building. So I'm gathering they did that because they wanted the security have all cars away from the buildings?
Let me get to a plan that's a little more clear. So there's a, there's a fence around the parking lot itself, then there's also another fence between the parking lot and the building itself.
Yeah, the top looks like that's a fence, right?
Yeah, this is a fence here, and it comes around here, and then there's also a fence here as well, so you can come into the site, no fence, but then to get, to get in here, there's, there's a guard, is there a guard shack here, or is it on me?
Yeah, that's, the guard shack's not there, the guard shack is there, and then there's a.
It looks like that's supposed to be an exit gate, at least that's what it's called out on something else, so I'm guessing they don't want you to come in there, but you can get out there. Visitor parking is that little strip up the north.
Yeah, to the left, right, yeah, correct.
And there's no gate or anything that goes to that, other than you can't get into the building unless you go through the guard shack.
The guard shack is here, correct?
What was the logic of having the parking so far away from the building? How would they explain that to you?
On one of these, they show future office building here, do they not?
It's kind of different, we don't normally see that.
Yeah, so future office.
Okay, so they've got plans to have something else built there eventually?
Looks like it, yeah.
Okay, makes more sense. Now, if somebody has, I gather they're not allowing any vehicular traffic other than the truck dock for the other buildings to the north, because there's no parking up there for anybody.
Correct, yeah.
Do you feel like there should be a couple of parking spots, just in case you needed somebody, something up there, they could at least have a place to stop? I guess it's an internal road, they could stop on the road, but this seems a little odd, there's no parking up there at all. Yeah? The landscaping crew that's going to be cutting the yard, I guess, have to go through the gate. I just, it seems a little odd, there aren't any parking spaces around the building at I mean, they surely paid enough money for this, I'm assuming they probably have an answer to that question, but it just looks a little weird.
I don't.
Okay.
I certainly can ask, Chairman, but I guess my thinking is that's, trying to segregate uses, that's where they want the trucks, and the landscaping crew is going to have to make other arrangements than where they park and get their equipment.
Yeah, I mean, obviously there's access, because you guys have fought to get a few roads all the way around it, so you got, if you got to get an ambulance in there, you can get somebody in there. So of the general layout, which I don't think is this one you're looking at, but there's, it looks like there's a parking area then that's going to be at the north?
So there's a, yeah, this one's showing the contractor parking, this was a Brad assignment during the construction.
This is just for the construction, it's not going to be permanent.
So it's temporary, it'll go away after.
And the construction entrance under this thing is going to come out to 87th Street, you think?
More than likely, or possibly, yeah.
Is that desirable?
Exactly how the staking's going to work, I'm not sure, I haven't had that.
Yeah, we didn't quite get into those types of issues, but they do have access from 91st and 87th to that contractor area, which we felt was more than adequate as far as getting people to that location.
I'm just thinking, get trucks onto 87th Street may be somewhat of a challenge.
The truck tractor will come up 91st Street?
Yeah, I would think they'd want to come up 91st, wouldn't they?
Yes, the truck tractor, they'll come up 91st Street.
There won't be construction entrances off of 87th Street.
Yeah, their main interest that, what would be east entrance would be the interest of trucks coming in for the construction equipment, their workers will use 87th Street to access the trailers.
Okay, there is access on 87th Street to campus. Yeah, but you've got to make the hairpin turn on Penner and go by all the schoolchildren crossing over, and that's not a great road to have construction traffic.
Yeah, well, we've talked with them, so during, when they bring in their heavy equipment on 91st Street, those stages so that it, during school sessions, it will not come during school hour, so those stages so that it comes after school starts, so that we don't have that conflict.
Well, I'm just thinking of the shift change, when they're getting off and everybody hops in their truck and drives down into 7th Street, that's going to be kind of impressive, too. Is there a way you can route that out with that Sunflower and have it come down 91st, or?
I mean, that's something that we can definitely talk with them about.
Keep it away from those neighborhoods over there.
Their, their traffic impact study only mentioned going on 91st Street, and that was for trucks and the workers.
Yeah, well, the plan obviously looks to me like they're coming in off 87th. Because there's no tie over here to Sunflower Road, right?
Correct.
There's no tie to Sunflower.
It's still early enough they can address that.
Well, it's probably worth thinking about in terms of getting at least some commitment from them, as to where they're going to have the trucks go.
We could definitely have that conversation with them.
I'm really not trying to pour vinegar all over this thing, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking of the poor people in temper trails, it's like, you know what, they're going to have trucks going by there.
Yeah, well, they've been, they've been very conscious about timing, and so we can, we can have that conversation with them.
Do you have comments, questions?
I don't know if it's in our code anywhere, or if it matters, but I was, I was trying to figure out where the fire hydrants were at, and then related to the question of no parking, like, I don't know if that matters a lot, or doesn't matter at all, but if your, if your plan is to not have parking for vehicles, then you might end up with vehicles in the easement accessways for the fire hydrants, and I was trying to figure out where those hydrants were.
So if you look at the utility plan?
And I did look at it, and it, I mean, there's like, well, there's like nine that I counted on there.
Oh, yeah.
There's a ton, so I don't know if, if we care about that or don't care about that, I just was trying to, what I was spending the last eight minutes doing, staring at my phone, I was trying to count fire.
That's where they said the, you know, they were proposing light, with the lighters right up there.
Yeah, but the fire hydrants are along the road, but, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot, I don't, I don't know if it matters or not, sometimes you'll just stripe the curb with a red stripe to say no parking or whatever, that's the only reason why I thought about it.
Yeah, well, you're right, then internally, that's the only place the park's going to be on those roads.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if you want it included in the site plan to have like the curb stripes, so you're very clear about where the trucks need to get to if there's a fire safety event.
You mean like market for a fire lane?
So the site plan that's before us tonight is for our approval, correct? This does not go back to city council?
That's correct, yeah.
I hate to delay approval of this for these kinds of issues, but it does seem like it's kind of worth talking about.
Well, I guess one thing, Chairman, is we do have that meeting on the 16th, so give John and myself a little bit of time, I don't know that.
Timing there, does that cause a problem for the applicant?
I don't know, they, I mean, obviously they want to start, but.
Yeah, it's my knowledge, I don't, I think they want to break ground in the spring, there's a lot they can do, they can do mass masquerading, some utility stuff without the site plan approval, I can't imagine three weeks is going to.
Well, yeah, if we're not going to conveniencing them, I, I kind of like to address those issues as well as anything else that we're worried about, but. Maybe a motion to table?
Make a motion that we table this site plan until the next meeting.
Moved and seconded, anything else we want to add to the list, or any other comments?
So mostly it was construction traffic, sequencing and routing, the fire hydrant issue.
Internal parking.
Internal parking, yeah.
Fire lane on internal roads, especially if there's no internal parking, and then traffic flow for construction, kind of the ones that I picked up.
Yep, yeah, so sort of three bullet points.
Yeah.
Yeah, any more than that, and it's too much.
Right, yeah, I want to go four, freeze it up. Okay, there's a motion pending then, roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Templin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Metoc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That leaves us with item seven B that I almost jumped ahead on, so I apologize.
You were so excited to get to that.
I really was, I was really excited about it.
I thought we were finished with carriage houses, but it's back, I'm so confused. Apparently back in 2017, when building number six was planted, there was a survey error that has somehow been found, and with the county.
And I was not on the planning commission in 27.
This is back before the planning commission with the correction, and I actually don't know where the correction is, they just said, take it the planning commission and prove it as is, because the county and the surveyor of record are happy with what's being presented to the planning commission. One thing that's interesting about this plat is because the internal lots have already been sold, that's why the signature page for the owners is a second page, and so they've got to get all the internal owners to sign in addition to the original developers of the carriage houses. So with that, staff recommends approval of the document, final plat number 16 as presented.
If it keeps on giving, Clark.
Good over good now, because your name's going up.
Oh, yeah, right, so, yeah, maybe the only thing I could pick up is maybe the strange little pie-shaped piece on the corner of building six, maybe that was, that drew the line wrong the first time, I don't know, I couldn't tell what they changed, and I really don't particularly care that they're good with it, the county's okay with it.
That's what I'm thinking.
It works for me. Discussion, questions, motion?
Motion to approve item seven B as stated by staff.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Metoc?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Templin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I believe that concludes our agenda. Our next meeting is on the 16th. Happy holidays. Brad, thank you for the back and forth on everything tonight.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I just knew it was coming, you know?
Seconded.
Lot to talk about.
For adjourn.
Well, you never know what we're going to talk about here.
So I read a thing that we're entertaining a motion for a nuclear plant.
Hang on now. Let's not.
I knew that was going to happen.
We already approved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yes, it was item seven C, we missed it.
No, sir, yeah, so Evergy and the state of Kansas, and a company called Terra Power have a memorandum of understanding to explore the possibility of citing a next-generation nuclear facility somewhere in Evergy service territory. A number of communities, you know, down by Wolf Creek, that community submitted interest, Hutchison did, a number of other communities submitted letters of interest, you know, in support of the facility, in their, in their communities, and the Department of Commerce, looking at the landscape in eastern Kansas, identified DeSoto as, you know, it could be, the company could be very interested in it, because the load is here, and Evergy's has massive investments in the area already, so they wanted to see if DeSoto might be willing to submit a letter, just expressing interest in learning more about the potential, and that's really the letters, shortened to the point, doesn't commit the city to doing anything other than exploring and being still involved in the conversation, so it really is a pretty interesting technology, if you, you know, just read up on what they're doing, it's, it's not your father's nuclear plant, it's the factors of safety.
I wrote the Facebook post, I figured I would ask.
Okay, you should know, yeah.
Somebody was going to ask me about it.
Sure, sure.
Why the hell we approve the nuclear plant.
Yeah, John, it's in your backyard, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, so any idea on the timeline of what's had, like what their process looks like?
It's hard to say, you know, it'll be a years-long process. Uh, it's hard to say, you know, it'll be a years-long process at at least to kind of select. And and it might be that they choose not to do a project in Kansas. That's.
Does that impact any of the solar stuff that we're looking at still or is that?
Again, there, there's been no site, you know, selected, you know, the one, I mean, the tie in there is that DeSoto does have an interest in Evergy increasing their power capacity because we have, you know, plans for for other advanced manufacturing and power users. We've also at least tacitly indicated support for alternative energy sources and solar regs that we've kind of, you know, that we that we adopted here. No, that's not at all. That's not all what I mean. At any rate.
Glad you like this.
I do have a question about the lighting in Panasonic. Coming eastbound on Old Gen Highway, past the building. And they've got several places where they've got these huge floodlights pointed towards 133rd Street that are extremely bright and almost blinding as you're going through there. One's by the, where all the trailers are, and there's two more farther east. One is right on the curb as you start to go down towards the new fire station. And the other one has just passed me if I remember right, but there was three of them. I mean, it reminded me of the search.